All right, I believe we got a quorum too now. Hey, yeah, Dutton's here. All right, cool.
Oh, she made it.
Yeah. Hi, I just love saying that. It sounds so nice. All right, well, let's, let's, let's work on that. Ready? Good evening. This is RTM regular September meeting. Call it to order at...
Seven oh three.
Seven oh three. Thank you. I'll turn it over for roll call.
Okay. Representative Adams?
Here.
Bailey? Burrell?
Here.
Casper?
Here.
Crockett Hubbard? Dean Shinbra? Dudden?
Here.
Here, 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 here.
Uh-oh.
Fetters? Fitzgerald?
Here.
Fritchy?
He's there.
He is. Okay. Fox?
Here.
Frickman?
Get ready.
Gardner A.
Here.
Gardner M.
Here.
Gibbs? Good?
Here.
Herbert? Johansson?
Here.
Kayden?
Here.
Keep? Luck? Massett?
Here.
Matter?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Norman?
Here.
Aubrey?
Here.
Perella?
Here.
Perry?
Here.
Powers K?
Nope.
Powers S?
Nope.
Pulaski?
Here.
Omritz?
Here.
V.C. Williams? Watson?
Nope.
Wells?
Here.
Whitney? Hume?
Here.
And...
I'm here.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. All right, we got a quorum.
Witness here.
Frickman, yep, we got you on here. Okay, thank you. All right, on to item B, moment of silence, salute to the flag. Again, let us remember today, nine eleven oh one, as well as nine eleven twelve.
Is this a moment of silence or have a few words from somebody seeing this nine eleven?
I'll just make a quick little statement to remember all those on this hollow day, September eleventh, two thousand and one. Representative Aubrey, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Onto item C, approval of minutes. If there are no additions, revisions, deletions, omissions to our June twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes, I will approve them. Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Item D, public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to no more than five minutes or less, as directed by the moderator, and if possible, submitted written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or by the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record, and if you wish to speak virtually, please call and/or register by emailing council@groton-ct.gov, no later than four PM on the day of the meeting. Is there anyone here that is signed up to speak? All right, anybody on Zoom? I see none. We move on. Received of communications, I've got a few here, so bear with me. In the past couple months, we received the resignation of Representative Robertson from District Three. She has moved out of Groton, and she thinks, we thank her for her service. Representative Dutton, you're here. I'm glad to see you. We were having, we had a couple communications regarding her moving out of town, but you're here, so I'm thankful for that. Groton, I participated in Groton beautification over at the police station a few months back. I know I mentioned this last June, but they are looking for members and volunteers. If you want to join up, we can always get you linked up with those folks. We also sent out the request for proposal for Pleasant Valley. That was a few months ago as well. If you had any questions on that, you should have forwarded to John Burr a few months back. We also were given some documents on the state's initiatives based on the request that we asked a few months back regarding what kind of funding sources and opportunities there are for towns such as ours. You should have gotten that email. If you didn't, just let me know. We'll resend it. We're trying to schedule a time for when Senator Summers and our two representatives in the state legislature could come and talk to us. Representative, well, they're here, so I don't have to mention that. Representative Powers K. and Powers S. notified the office that they were not going to be here, and also Representative Watson notified me that he will not be here as well, which leads us, if there's any other communications for the group? Very well. The next communication I have is report of the town manager, which the town manager is not going to be here this evening. He is under the weather. He just wanted to notify me and tell you all that he will be sending a monthly report as well as a financials soon, but he's not feeling well. Okay? If you have any questions, of course, you can always email Town Manager Burr. Economic development, we had two reports that were in our packet for May twenty twenty-four and June twenty twenty-four. If you have any questions, you can always email John Burr on that. Yes, Representative Aubrey? If, if you wouldn't mind doing that under liaison reports, that would be wonderful, because you're, you are participating in that still, correct? Thank you. All right, report for the superintendent of schools. We didn't get one, and they have not attended, or the Board of Ed Chair did not notify us that they weren't gonna be here today. Committee reports. I have one committee report from Representative Casper. They didn't have any action, but if you wanted to share your report and then we could approve those minutes, that'd be great. Thank you. It's a very brief meeting.
Special meeting of the RTM Community Development and Services Committee, July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Zoom meeting, present via Zoom, Chair Clarence Casper, Representatives Becky Matter and Bill Keep, and ad hoc member J.C. Ambois. Meeting called to order by Chairman Casper at five oh three PM. The item was to review the thirty-fourth RTM Rule nine point two point one, student involvement, to solicit participants as well as refine the student selection process for liaisons through the RTM for up to four high school students who are town residents selected by a process to be developed by this committee. From our initial discussion, it was suggested that the language in the rule could be improved, and also the applicants could be from any high school or from the home school population as long as they are residents of the town of Groton. A notification process will need to be developed. It was thought that initial contact to the town high school would be through the Board of Ed. Initial content, contact for any applicant would be through the RTM moderator. Applicants would write a short, around a hundred and fifty words, description of why they want to be a liaison. It was envisioned that there would be a short interview of each applicant by the committee before being chosen. So the entire simple procedure would include notifications to various schools and home school student RTM of the student RTM liaison opportunity. Ask all applicants to write a short, a hundred and fifty words or so, why they want to be a liaison, meet with the applicants, and choose from the applicants. Term would be one year, renewable. No motions were brought forth at this time. The committee adjourned at five fourteen PM.
If you could just make a motion to approve that, please? The minutes? All right, so moved by me, seconded by Burrell, on approval of the minutes of the Community Development and Services Committee. Any questions regarding the minutes? See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right, motion approved, the minutes passes unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Casper. We can now take this off our agenda for future meetings, too, please.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on, education, Chairman Massett, no committee, no report?
Right.
I'm going to recognize Representative Norman, who is going to read into the record the minutes from the Finance Committee.
Do you want me to pause after each one to vote or read the whole thing?
Let's, let's do one at a time, and then we'll move the whole meeting minutes at the end.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. RTM Finance Committee special meeting, Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM in the Town Hall Annex, Meeting Room Two. In person or on Zoom was Chair Sean Powers and Representatives Dean Shinbra, Fritchy, Gardner, Norman, Pulaski, and Omritz was excused. Manager Burr, Director Barry, and Housing Chairman Robert Frank were also present for the meeting. Called to order at seven oh four PM, and then we get into new business. Do you want me to do the first one?
Yes, please. Is it two zero two four six five zero?
We did them in different orders.
Okay, well, you can pick whichever order that you wish.
Great. We're gonna start with the Recreation Trails Grant, two zero two four six eight eight two. Chairman Powers asked Representative Pulaski to read into the record this resolution seconded by Representative Norman. There was discussion where Director Barry gave a review of the Cop Park project starting in two thousand and seventeen and an overview of the funding grants and the work performed up to this point and what the grant will improve. The funding will improve three areas of work in the park. This grant will improve the paths by excavating the path and leveling it with stone dust past the dog park to improve the yellow trail to make it more handicap accessible. The overall goal is to be able to complete the entire loop over time. The grant will also provide a wheelchair which can handle the path terrain, which residents can use to, can sign up to use, and a security deposit for use will be taken. The purchase of software for the visually impaired and blind to download apps for trail guides and all have narratives for the person to hear in certain areas of the trail. The committee had a few concerns about safety, Wi-Fi access and cell service in the park. Do other towns have, have an area, in the area have wheelchairs for trails, et cetera? The overall response from the committee members was positive. Chairman Powers called for a vote on a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the Trail, Trails Grant acceptance. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Thank you. If you could just move that motion for that.
Move one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the Recreation Trails Grant.
Second.
Okay, mission. Motion was moved by Norman, seconded by Burrell for, this is the Recreation Trails Grant. The amount is for a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. I open it up for discussion. Yes, Representative Aubrey?
Excuse me, I was just wondering if without Sean being here, there might not be an answer, but do we still have to have the approval of the Cop family in order to do anything out there?
That did not come up in conversation.
Apparently, that did not come up in conversation.
Chairman, this is John.
Hey, hey, Mr. Burr.
Hey, I'm just sick. My voice is almost out. We do not need permission from the Cop family for this, no.
Aren't we supposed to run by them anything that we're gonna do in that area?
No, not like, not these type of things, no, and we already have a trail there.
Okay, I'll take your word for it, but I don't think you're right. Thank you. See you soon.
All right, any other discussion on this motion on the floor? Okay, see you none. I'm gonna call for a vote on Recreationals Trails Grant in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Which one would you like to do next, Representative Norman?
The next one up was the Groton Housing Authority, ARPA, request.
Okay.
So, two thousand and twenty-four, six, seven, nine, dash, three.
Correct.
Chairman Powers asked Representative Norman to read the resolution into the record seconded by Representative Pulaski. The discussion, Chairman Frank explained the sewer work which needs to be addressed with these funds which are available and remaining in the ARPA funds. The old sewer lines are deteriorating due to age, and in fact, they are clay pipes. He explained the need to avoid sewage backup into the living space of residences. The funds will be used at Pequot Village in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, with the remainder of the funds, four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars to the ARPA fund for the Groton Housing Authority. Chairman Powers called for a vote to accept moving three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars to Pequot Village Project. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero, zero abstentions. Move the three hundreds, I move the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Okay, motion was moved by Representative Norman, seconded by Representative Adams for Groton Housing Authority, American Rescue Plan Act request. The amount is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. I open up discussion on this motion? Yes, Representative Fox?
Is this work that's going to be done, or is there somebody assigned to do this work, or is this just being followed?
This is work that needs to be done and will be done. These were remaining ARPA funds that had not been used and so needed to be allocated by the end of the year, and I think from the conversation we had, and Town Manager Burr can also chime in if he wants, this will basically happen ASAP, given the consequences of not doing it quickly.
But we don't, do we have a contractor to do this?
I don't, Town Manager, do you know if we have a contract?
It's not. Our project, the Groton Housing Authority, is separate. The town doesn't contract for this, Groton Housing Authority will contract for it, and yes, they do have a contract, contract.
Thank you, Manager Burr. Any other discussion? Okay, see you none. I'll move for a vote on two zero two four dash six, seven, nine, dash, three, Groton Housing Authority, American Rescue Plan Act request. The amount is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Brett Norman?
Okay, Department of Defense Grant. Six fifty dash four. Chairman Powers asked Representative Gardner to read the resolution into the record. It was seconded by Representative Pulaski. Discussion, Manager Burr explained the reason behind the community, the community needs for the subbase in New London to have this study. Though SCCOG, this, through S, through SCCOG, this plan is for land use studies and involves multiple towns to, to meet the military demands for housing in the immediate area for readiness and support. The study includes a total area of two hundred and ninety-two square miles. The grant will provide three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the town matching grant funding for just staff time from involved municipalities. There, this, there is a two, two-fold grant project involved, and Manager Burr can provide further information about this at the meeting this evening. The committee inquired about the input of local residents, BRAC discussions, and the influx of residents due to the relocation of employees and naval personnel, and we discussed a variety of public meetings, surveys, and inquiries by the JLUS committee members. Committee asked if there, if the Navy, Navy would be building housing, and the tax implications of pilot funding were discussed. Chairman Powers called for a vote to accept three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for this Department of Defense study. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Oh, I move three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Oh, thank you.
Okay, motion was moved and moved by Norman, seconded by Adams for the two zero two four dash six five zero dash four, Department of Defense Grant. The amount is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I open up the floor for discussion on this motion. Representative Fox?
Did I understand it right that the, the Navy is going to provide this money? And does the town have to match it? Did you say?
We're matching it with, like, hours of town staff, not with money itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? See you none. I'll call for a vote on two zero two four dash six five zero dash four, Department of Defense Grant. The amount is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Great, last one. Two thousand and twenty-four dash one, Port Security Grant Program. Chairman Powers asked Representative Pulaski to read the resolution into the record, seconded by Representative Norman. Discussion, Manager Burr explained that the police department will receive an eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollar grant from FEMA Port Security Grant Program for the replacement of two twenty-twelve original engines for a twenty-seven foot boat we use to patrol the waters in town. We are responsible for contributing twenty-five percent of the cost received this grant, as well as for the replacement of the engines. Chairman Powers called for a vote to accept eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars from the Port Authority Security Grant Program. I move eight, eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
All right, motion was moved by Norman, seconded by Perella for two zero two four dash seven, seven, eight, dash, two, Port Security Grant Program. The amount is eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. I open up the floor for discussion on this.
Is that much money as one quarter?
No, that much money is the three quarters for the replacement of two engines, because it's, yeah. Big boats, big engines, very expensive.
Representative Aubrey?
Is there a contribution that has to come from the town?
Yes, it's gonna be twenty-five percent. Is that correct, Representative Norman?
Yes.
What account is that gonna come out of?
Town Manager.
Town Manager Burr, yeah, do you know what account that's coming, oh, we also have Chief Fisaro here, so whoever answers first wins.
No, this is it.
No, this is it. This is it. We're here. This is your time. Come on, come on down, sir.
Welcome.
Town of Groton, Chief of Police, Police Fisaro? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. LJ Fisaro, Chief of Police. Yes, twenty percent, it's a matching grant, but it can be in kind. It can be in cash donate, cash, or it can be in kind, which is services. The grant explains exactly what it is. These, these engines do need to be replaced. They're, they're, they're working right now, but just barely. They need to be replaced. We get a lot of use out of this watercraft. It's used virtually every weekend during the summer months from anywhere from late April, early May till currently being used now, so through September. But there would be a match. Where would the funds come from? That would be a discussion I would have with the Town Manager. Should it be approved? There's a variety of different sources we could look at, but yeah, it may, it may require me coming back to the Council and/or RTM to ask for those funds. Or at least a percentage of those funds. And, and if I may also...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, this is the, the top end, eighty-two thousand. We've got a preliminary estimate, maybe less than that, maybe. We, we expect it would be less than that. We believe it would be no more than the eighty-two thousand dollars. And of that, the federal government will play, will pay three quarters of it.
So you'll come back and tell us?
If, if in fact, there is no other source that we can draw the money from, yes, you'll, you'll, I'll be coming back to the Council and/or RTM to discuss appropriating additional funds so that we can fund this much-needed project, something that supports the entire community. so that we can fund this much-needed project, something that supports the entire community.
Any other discussion? Okay, see and none. I'll call for a vote on 2024-778-2, Port Security Grant Program. The amount is $82,824. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please say no, or raise your hand. Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Yes, we don't have anything to do with this nuclear safety emergency performance grant.
Yeah, that's the other thing I'm here for, so.
That's the other thing you're here there. So do we have that one on there, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Last one.
Last one. Okay, 2024-756-1, FY24 Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant. Chairman Powers asked Representative Fritchie to read the resolution into the record, seconded by Representative Gardner. Manager Burke explained this grant is yearly and goes for equipment upgrades to the emergency dispatcher room next to emergency operations center, along with any leftover funding to be applied to EMD salaries and drill supplies. Chairman Powers called for a vote to accept $70,000 for the nuclear safety emergency program. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. So moved, $70,000.
Okay, I didn't get the second on there. Who was that? Oh, okay, thank you. Moved by Representative Norman, seconded by Representative Good. Item 2024-756-2, FY24 Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, in the amount of $70,000. I open up the floor for discussion on this. Representative Aubrey?
I'm sorry, I'm blocking your own.
Oh, absolutely not. We're happy to have you here.
Is that for evacuation?
Yes, sir.
Through the moderator, yes. So unlike the first grant, the first grant that I just spoke about is a competitive grant, this is something that's awarded every year because we're part of the Millstone Nuclear Power Plant Emergency Preparatus Zone, so on, so all the communities that are within that 10-mile radius, we're awarded a certain allocation based on population and a couple of other factors. So this is, we don't compete for this, this is awarded to the town, and it's to, you know, build our resiliency in order to respond to an emergency that could potentially happen at Millstone. We get some additional benefits of that. In this case, our dispatch center, we've been able to do some upgrades this year that were funded through the same grant that you approved last year. This is to increase our capabilities in our emergency operations center. There's a small dispatch room down there, which is a fallback dispatch room, but it's also something that we would use in the event of any kind of emergency, whether it was something that happened at Millstone, or some natural or man-made disaster. Ironically, I'm talking about that on September 11th, right, the day that we all remember for a man-made disaster, but it is, you know, funding that's allocated from Millstone Nuclear Power Plant in FEMA, through the state of Connecticut, through the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protections, Division of Homeland Security. So we do get this annually, so it's really a kind of a pass-through grant. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, but I'd like to ask you another one if I can. The monies that are coming in, is it specific in what it has to be used for, or could it possibly be used for something that we didn't allocate the monies for you in the past?
It is scripted. It's, there's, we're pretty limited. There's a little bit of flexibility, but it has to be tied to that. We have to get approval from the state, the managers of this grant, and the fund is not unlimited. It's rationed out to all the surrounding communities as well, not just the communities in the 10-mile zone, but also to the host communities. For instance, stores in Norwich are host communities. So if there was an evacuation from Groton, you know, our population would be directed to one of those host communities. They get some of this funding as well. So it's not an unlimited amount. It is pretty prescribed. In our case, and in most cases, a portion of it is used for the emergency management director's salary offsets. We do, you know, we use that here in Groton as well.
I was wondering if possibly it could be used for the emergency portable facility that you wanted.
Probably not. It wouldn't be enough money for that. This is $70,000. It's a relatively low amount.
Didn't you get half of your money?
No, that was withdrawn.
We'll work on that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Representative Casper? Understood. Any other discussion? Representative Pulaski? Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call a vote for item 2024-. Okay, Representative Gibbs is here, so we have more people now. We have 26. Okay, item 2024-756-2, FY24 Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, in the amount of $70,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, thank you, Chief Fisaro, for coming down.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there. And now, if we could just move the minutes from the Finance Committee, please.
We adjourned at 8:22 PM, and I am moving the minutes of the Finance Committee. Second.
Okay, motion was moved by Norman, seconded by Pulaski, to approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting. Any questions on the minutes? Yes, Representative Good?
Yes, sorry, just one comment. I tried to watch on YouTube, but the sound was terrible. Half the people, you couldn't hear it all, so.
Got it. We'll be better with our microphones next time.
Thank you. Any other discussion on approval of the minutes?
Sir, one correction.
Yes, sir.
It was not Bob Frink there. It was Rob Capalletti, the Executive Director, PTA.
Got it.
You could just make that.
I will make that.
Thank you so much.
I will make that change.
All right, thank you, Town Manager Burke. Okay, see and no more discussion on approval of the minutes. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Representative Norman. And again, just keep your thoughts with Representative Powers K and Powers S. She went under procedure yesterday, so hopefully she's on the mend and getting better, minute by minute.
It went very well.
Very good, good to hear. Public safety, no committee, no report?
No committee, no report.
Roger that. Public works, no committee, no report. Gotcha. Representative Watson, no committee, no report. Rules and procedures, Watson, no committee, no report. So I move on to liaison reports. Representative Aubrey, did you want to give us a report on the EDC, please?
If I might from here?
You can.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
I just wanted to mention, we were supposed to be having a meeting at the Nautilus this month, and we were inviting businesses from downtown, what I call downtown Groton proper. And because of the fact that we lost Paige Bronk, who was organizing it, had to be canceled. But we are gonna be going forward with this, with the GBA is, I'm just sitting there, running my mouth. But anyways, we're gonna try to reorganize it, come back out, and we're gonna try to do a outreach program to the businesses. What the GBA would like to do is create Groton Business Association, and so hopefully that can happen. One of the other things that they're hoping to do is some sort of a Christmas program. So I just thought I'd ask if anybody has any ideas for what they think might be something that could be done in Groton proper. We'd love to have your ideas. Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, so if any RTM, thank you, Representative Aubrey. If any member has any ideas or vision for anything that was just discussed, please feel free to email or call Representative Aubrey. Sound good? All right, thank you. Representative Wells, did you have a golf liaison report?
I do. All warmed up, thank you. There were representatives of the Women's Golf Association that brought up an issue of, which I can explain, and I didn't bother to ask, about red flags that apparently located, that allow you to tell where the hole is placed on the green. And they vary, they move around. They put the hole sometimes to the front, sometimes to the rear, and some of the greens are elevated, and, and the, their famous turtleback greens, so they need to know the distance to the hole. It helps when you play. So I don't know if there's any, they just brought that issue up, and I didn't hear any resolution as whether anything was gonna happen. They had Women's Golf Month, they had some discounts. It was very well-received, apparently quite successful, and it turned out for... Meanwhile, the courses, weekends have been filling up with members, and the, and sometimes they're booking tee times and not showing up, or they'll show up and join another foursome. And as a, anyway, as a result, we're not selling, they're not, they're not getting any revenue off of it, especially if the members book up the weekends, then the members, they're not getting, anyway, the revenue has, I shouldn't say fallen off, but it's sort of plateaued. We used to be, we used to be enjoying every time it was like, wow, more, 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 not anymore. It slowed down, and so they're looking into exploring whether to, you know, work out some way to charge people for booking a tee time and not showing up, and also possibly limiting the number of members. And of course, and that would make more room for paying people who were paying by the round. Anyway, they had specials for Women's Golf Month. The specials are very well-received. They, it went, it all went well. And I guess I'm doomed to report this, the bathrooms are proceeding in the clubhouse. That is going along, and it's about to go out to bid for a bathroom in the maintenance building near Hole 8. I recall that they initially had tried to put out a, essentially a restroom with a pump-out tank underneath it, and we never could get the, we never could get a bid that fit into the, so it's right now, it's set to go out to bid, and it will be plumbed into one of the maintenance buildings near Hole 8. So it looks like we will get it, but it hasn't been put out to bid yet. And the work in the clubhouse, it varies. They have to grind the floors down and do all kinds of things, and so they put it off to a different time. And let's see, whatever. The bunker works that we approved, approved in the spring, they put off to the fall. So that is now proceeding, and they're working on, and this may require relocating keys and some adjustments to, she's the play in the course, to allow them to work on bunkers. Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Representative Wells. Does anybody have any questions on that? It was very thorough. The only thing I can say, Representative Wells, and I'm not, I'm a disc golf guy now, I'm not a ball golf guy, is the flag represents where it's either gonna be, the color depends on if it's at the front of the green, the back of the green, or in the center of the green. And it's red, white, and blue determines whichever one. And I couldn't tell you. I think red's the closest, and white's in the middle, and blue might be in the back.
Well, that makes sense. They only mentioned red flags, so I wasn't sure. Nobody mentioned the other colors.
Okay. That's disc golf. We don't have, we just have a basket. It's just far away, and it's in the woods. So, yes, Representative Casper?
I was gonna ask a question. Some courses have gone away, done away with the colored flags, and they just have one flag, and you have to go to the...
It's like an app or something, correct?
The pro shop, and get the map for where the flags are. Is that what Chedakasit is going to?
They didn't respond to these questions.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll do the Virginia Morgan presentation. No, they didn't say anything about it. They just listened, and that was the end of it.
All right, so for the folks online who didn't hear that, they did not respond to the new updated flag situation that Representative Casper said. Roger that, thank you. Any other liaison reports? I believe we're still looking for Athletic Fields Task Force. We're looking for someone that's the Town Council Board of Ed. Did we get any info on when they were having that joint meeting? Okay, so we still haven't had a joint meeting, Board of Ed, Town Council, City of Groton Council, and RTM, but I'm sure we'll try to coordinate that soon. All right, any other liaison reports? Always looking for volunteers, okay. Item K, budget discussions. Anybody have any questions regarding budget? Representative Aubrey?
I don't have.
You got a microphone right there, right?
Yeah. I don't have a discussion, I have a suggestion, and probably all of you do it already, but it's so helpful. If you watch the council, when they're talking about the budget items, then when we're here, we're not having to do the whole thing over again, asking everybody all the questions. We have a better grasp on what we think is a good idea and what we think is a bad idea. So I just make the suggestion.
Thank you, Representative Aubrey. I wholeheartedly agree. We have a fantastic Groton Municipal Television that runs most of those meetings livestreamed, and then within 24 hours, they're on the website, or on the YouTube page. So I always highly encourage, and if you use cable and all that, there are also rerun on there. But I highly encourage everyone to watch those meetings, to try to get some information on whatever's gonna be coming our way, whether it be on budget or on days like this. Okay? Any other budget discussion? All right, see and none. We're gonna move on to other business, other business. Representative Aubrey?
I bet you're all glad I'm back. Just one second, I wanna do a little pitch up here. I just gotta get up here. Here we are. I'm sure you all know that the Rotary does a lot of different things to raise money, and the majority of that money goes to scholarships. And what we're trying to do is a different kind of fundraiser this year, because we would like to make the scholarships larger. So what we have for you this year is Groton Monopoly. So for that person you don't know what to get for Christmas, this is your answer. It's $25 for a game. All you gotta do is give me a call. I'll deliver. I'll bring them to the next meeting, whatever works for you, if anybody's interested. There, this is all local businesses this time, on the inside. And so it's kind of fun, and it's going for a very good reason that we're trying to raise this money. So think of who would like one. Thank you very much for the time. The Rotary thanks you. You wanna give me money now?
Definitely, I'd like to get one of those, Representative Aubrey, so just let me know. All right, hey, I'm the first subscriber here. How about that?
I know where to collect it.
Looks pretty cool. Thank you. You know where I live.
Yes, I do.
All right. Any other discussion regarding other business? Yes, Representative Perella?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just two referrals I'd like to try to make. One of them is that we received a call, probably should have been earlier in the meeting, from a resident on the peddlers on the sides of the road. So we did call the police department, and they were under the indication that the issue gets especially dangerous when the peddlers are on the sides of the road collecting money, and they step in the highway. So one of the issues has been is other towns, such as New London, for example, have ordinances that are a little stronger in their language. So I'd like to refer that to either public safety or the council, to look into maybe cleaning up some of the language on our ordinance on that issue. And then the second referral I'd like to make is for crosswalks on Long Hill Road, since there's gonna be about three or four new businesses on the road, and they have not, the state, would probably be a letter to the state, across from Codos, because they have the markers there for the crossings, but the crosswalks, crosswalks are not marked. And there's a lot of people in wheelchairs now going down to shop, and the area is getting very dangerous with the, with the speeders on the road. So I'd like to do that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna just at least give you my twin pennies on this one. RTM doesn't have anything to do with or... RTM doesn't have anything to do with ordinances. Yes, we do have the opportunity to veto an ordinance, but we really don't enact legislation such as that, so the body to do that would be the Town Council. I would wholeheartedly encourage you to reach out to the Town Councils, councilors, to try to see about looking into that, um, for that one. And then I'm, I'm definitely unsure about the crosswalks, because where you're talking about also has to do with state roads and town roads, so I would wanna talk to the town manager on, on, off-channel on that. Not today, 'cause he's not feeling well, but we can get back to you for the next meeting on steps to move forward, if that's okay with you, Representative Perella.
I figured that would be probably correct, that it might be.
Yes, Town Manager Burt.
Just a quick thing, we've actually been looking at crosswalk, cross signal locks, uh, up and downtown Mystic One, you know.
I couldn't understand that, I'm sorry.
Over by the Bridge Market, so it's easy enough to look at others. They're about, they're about forty-five thousand each. Um, there's a certain one the DOT allows, but, um, you know, if you want us to look at, we could certainly look at it. Just a matter of money, I'm sure we could get them.
Okay, I, I hope you guys heard that. I know he, he's got tough voice issues right now, but, um, it roughly costs about forty-five thousand dollars of what he just said to create a crosswalk. There is already ones that have been being proposed down at Bridge Market, if I'm not mistaken, so they could try to see if they can follow that concept up on Long Hill Road too. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other, other business? All right, before, before I go, I just want to again welcome our new representative, Representative Hume, who's here. Again, Representative Matter, you jumped on board. Both of you are gonna be assigned to Community Development and Services. Thank you for attending that meeting. And then we also added Representative Nikki Knife Edge in District One, although she wasn't here today in person, she's gotta come and get sworn in either next meeting or go down to the town clerk's office and be sworn in by the town clerk. We still have three openings in District Four. Uh, one's a Democrat seat, one is an at-large or Republican seat, um, so there's three total over there, and, and I believe we're full in all other districts right now. So again, thank you so much for participating in public service. With that being said, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, um, motion made by Adams, seconded by Perella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Abstentions, all right. Motion to adjourn is carried. All right, we will see you next month. Thank you so much. I'll take, I'll take those. Representative Casper, thank you.